Welcome to the candidate forum for the Wheaton City Council North and East Districts, sponsored by the League of Women Voters. My name is Barb Lyman, a member of the Wheaton League of Women Voters and your moderator this evening. I do live in West Chicago, so I will not be voting for any of the candidates participating in the forums this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League's purpose is to promote civic responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government and civil civic discourse. Providing forums is a major mission of the League of Women Voters so citizens can become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. The format for tonight is a candidate forum and not a debate. Candidates are expected to accurately represent the facts and their responses reflect their own views and opinions. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. All candidates attending tonight have signed and returned the ground rules by the deadline established in the invitation. These rules specify the format, time limits, broadcasting of the forum, and other rules related to the conduct of the forum. The candidates will begin in alphabetical order with their one-minute opening statement. They will then alternate the order in which they answer questions for one minute. And after the question portion of the forum, each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement. Members of the League will be acting as timers and I will enforce the time limits. Should a candidate exceed the time limit, I will ask them to finish their sentence and move on to the next candidate. We have received a multitude of questions from the community in advance of tonight's forum. To ensure that questions represent a balance of topics, a panel of experienced members of the League of Women Voters have reviewed the questions submitted for appropriateness, applicable to all candidates, and to avoid duplication. We will do our best to read each question asked within the timeframe allotted for tonight's forum. We are grateful for those in the community who take the time to learn more about the candidates before casting their vote by attending or watching candidate forums. For those in attendance this evening, we ask that you listen attentively, turn off your phones and electronic devices, avoid commenting or disrupting others during the forum, and refrain from applause until the end of the forum. Finally, I want to say how appreciative we are of the candidates who not only willing to serve in office, but who have agreed to be here tonight and share their ideas and goals. So let us get started and hear from the candidates for Wheaton City Council North District, candidate Scott Brown and Sayed Hussein, and for Wheaton City Council East District, candidates Mark Barbier and Leah Price. So candidate Brown, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Sure. Thank you for hosting for the League of Women Voters and for the opportunity to be here with you all tonight. My name is Scott Brown and I've had the privilege of living in the Wheaton community for 40 years, now residing in downtown Wheaton with my lovely bride and two children. You know, I love Wheaton. I am running in order to maintain the momentum that Wheaton has. I've had the privilege of serving as North District Councilmember the last four years, and we have achieved a lot. Everything from the downtown streetscape projects, French market renovations, the updated restaurants, intent activity up and down Hale Street. There's a lot of great things that Wheaton has going for it. In addition, we are one of few communities with the AAA rating, credit rating, of which I'm super proud of and the fact that we have been able to do so without raising the tax levy in the last six years. These are great accomplishments. There's a lot of reasons to be a proud resident in Wheaton, and I want to continue to serve in that role.
Thank you. Candidate Hussein, your one-minute opening statement.
Thank you, Barb. Thank you to the League as well and everyone here for attending in person and who ended up watching later on. I was born and raised in Chicago and Indianapolis. I'm going to read a lot of this because I only have 50 seconds left. I've traveled the nation and returned here to Wheaton to raise my children, over 25 years, building high-performance teams, scaling high-visibility projects, and solving customer problems. That's what I do professionally. I love to give that skill set back and help nonprofits and bring my skill to their boards and help people the way that our scout leaders and I have helped the boys grow and flourish. I've learned from the Citizens Police Academy, Fire Academy, serve on the Historic Commission, and I'm a certified emergency responder. I love sharing Wheaton's depth and foundation, and I'm here to bring my talents and my expertise to help Wheaton move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Barbier.
All right. I'm Mike Barbier, the current East District City Councilman. Contested reelections are a great opportunity for self-reflection. And what I kept coming back to is how thankful and grateful I am to be a member of the Wheaton City Council for the past eight years. From the incredible people that I've worked with on this council and other boards, to the city staff that has taught me so much, to the residents that I've been able to meet and hopefully help with an issue, to the platform and network that this provided me with to do something magical for a hero and his mother. This position has given me so much, and it has been my honor and pleasure to serve. I still remember taking off my Wheaton Warrenville South jersey for the last time. Well, I knew I'd look darn good in that Purdue black and gold, and I mean darn good. It wouldn't be for my hometown. Serving on the council and wearing Wheaton across my chest has been something truly special. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you all for the past eight years, and if you'll have me, I'd love to have another four.
Thank you. Candidate Bryce, your one-minute opening statement.
I thank you to the League for inviting me here and everyone else for taking part of this forum. My name is Leah Bryce. I'm running for the East District Council and as an educator in this district. I've spent a lot of my career fostering collaboration, problem-solving, and even civic responsibility. And why I'm here is because I believe it is important for our community to be informed, to be aware, and I looked into it and thought, how can I get involved with my city? While I've only lived technically in Wheaton for about five years, I've worked in the district for over 15. And I believe that through my role in education that I can help facilitate conversations, move us forward with new ideas, and build off of the success that the council and the city has already done so far for our town. And that is something I hope that I can be a part of and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin their questions with candidate Hussein. This is the first question. What is the top issue facing the city and how do you plan to address it?
Thank you. I think the top issue for residents and for city is always related to money. It's fiscal. We've done a fantastic job maintaining the tax levy stable over the last few years post-COVID era. And I think that veils to some extent our infrastructure challenges and concerns that we have in the next few years, or a little bit longer than that. We do have time. It's not an immediate emergency. But we need to find ways to increase revenue, find ways to propel growth, and build up our capital reserves, and have the ability to pay for more of the expenses that are coming. You know, we have the fire station on President Street, we have the police department building, and we have the Public Works building that are top three in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Barbier, same question.
I am biased because I have a bachelor's and master's degree from Purdue University in Civil Engineering, so I'm going to go with infrastructure. Now, while flooding and traffic safety get the most attention, usually get us the most emails, this is largely because we're able to observe them. The underground utilities are vitally important and can too easily and often be overlooked. I think we all saw the devastating effects of the water main break in Skokie. And by bringing my experience and perspective to the council, I believe that puts our city in a better position to avoid catastrophes like that.
Thank you. Candidate Bryce?
One of the significant issues that I think we're facing right now is actually the hiring or finding a new city manager and an assistant city manager in order to build succession in our government here. Coming across this information and learning about the future planning of Wheaton, I hope that as a city councilmember, I can help address this by engaging in meaningful conversations with the city workers and with the community to understand what we need and to ensure strong leadership for the future and as we go forward. I would also say that I really do like the strategic planning that we've had, the five points. I know financial stability is a big enhance and the enhancing of infrastructure. And I would like to kind of see us review and reflect on how we've done over those five strategic plans, and then see what we can address to go forward from it and what else we can add to.
Thank you. And candidate Brown?
I'm going to take advantage of being the last one to go here and acknowledge some of the ones that have been said and choose to highlight something that I think is our priority, certainly in the North District. And I want to couch it under the resident advocacy. I think Wheaton is very much a residential community. Wheaton is a unique community in that it's got amazing parks, community spaces to enjoy. We have a lot of wonderful families. Resident advocacy in this regard, I want to pivot it into making it safe and easy for families, for children, to get around. So I'm thankful for the sidewalk program that we have implemented. It's got some nuances, block by block, that we're learning about, but I want to make sure that we have a safe community in that regard. And then lastly, what I would say is that just, I think there are some traffic control issues that we need to address, whether that be coming down Harrison, Washington, some of the thoroughfares that the North District has as a challenge.
Thank you. Candidate Barbier. How do you act as a representative of your district while balancing and carrying out the needs of the whole city?
All right. I think in general, all the districts are different, but our similarities far outweigh any of those differences. And usually, what is best for the entire city is generally best for that district. I know there are issues where you have something like the Roosevelt Road corridor, where all the negative impacts will be borne by those districts and those residents that are adjacent to it. But I think we do a great job in reaching out and understanding those residents and their concerns. So that's how we do it.
Candidate Bryce?
So as a resident in the East District as well, I am reflecting on the idea of how I come across information that our city government handles and takes care of. And I think that we need to have those communications and those conversations to engage with the community. I believe, just as Barbier said, that what's good for one district is going to be good for us all, but it would be crucial for me to engage with my district to find out what it is that are main concerns, but to still even see how it will benefit everyone. So it's really more about how we can work as a unit to make sure that we are moving forward for the best for all of us, because I can't really imagine that we would have a district not really helping out another district here in Wheaton.
Thank you. Candidate Brown?
Yeah. I actually grew up in the south side of Wheaton, and I joke with my friends in the south district and up on the council. I said, I'd like to see all the projects in North Wheaton get funded by South Wheaton, but that usually doesn't work so well. I think when you look at this question, the real objective there is that economic development. There are a couple of infill lots and projects, the Roosevelt Road corridor that councilmember Barbier spoke about. These are the things that run across the entirety of our community. And so where are the ways in which we can energize and bring to life some of the maybe idle or underutilized properties? I think there's a lot of opportunity in the Donata community right now, and so I think that's really kind of the best way to approach that question.
Candidate Hussein?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. How do you act as a representative of your district while balancing and carrying out the needs of the whole city?
Sure. Thank you. We're one Wheaton. We, as a resident, I don't think of myself as a person that lives in the North District. I see myself as a resident of Wheaton and perhaps of the surrounding area. I've actually lived in three districts in Wheaton, so I have friends and former neighbors and two others. So it's very easy for me to think about it in that way and to, you know, if there's an issue in one area, as I've learned about in the last few months' worth of city council meetings that I've watched and sat in, I just go there and I see, you know, what is this retention pond and how big is it and what's the problem with dredging and so forth. And then suddenly it makes sense, and that's how I operate. You know, I need to have the data firsthand and see what the issues are and go back and look at the conversation and discussion, and I can contribute in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Bryce? You mentioned the strategic plan, so our next question is going to ask, what area of the strategic plan do you believe should be the focus over the next five years?
Thank you. Good question. Having, looking into the strategic plan, we've done a lot. We have the financial stability. We are enhancing our infrastructure, community safety. These are all key points. Environmental sustainability is one that I think could be done a little bit more aggressively, I guess would be the term. When I think about the flooding in town, how we're building up, which also goes to the infrastructure, but how we are taking care of the environment and using that to benefit the property of our town, and also being able to think responsibly about our community and what we're bringing in. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Brown?
Yeah, I would focus on the second priority in the strategic plan, which is the enhanced infrastructure. You know, it's not real fun to talk about sewer, water, pipes, sanitary pipes, but it's critical, and ours is aging. And so we've done a nice job of building up our fund balances, fund reserves, and we've got to weigh out the ability for us to absorb those costs, given the fact that some of these are fairly urgent. We just sat in a couple of weeks ago a session that prioritized or attempted to prioritize the needs there. With some of these projects, the areas would improve dramatically, some of the flooding issues that we've seen, and just really make this community a desired or continue to have Wheaton be a desired place for residents to be. So that's second priority of the infrastructure.
Candidate Hussein?
Thank you. You know, I've spent my career responding to executives about why something isn't the way it is, and I encourage all of you to look at the strategic plan and look at our progress on each of the goals, because there's something deeper there, and that's where I would focus my energy rather than on one of the five goals. We are doing well, and everyone does well, and everyone misses the mark. But the root of it, why the mark is missed as much as missed, is really what needs to be understood. And then a decision needs to be made on whether that's acceptable or not. How far have we missed the mark and should it have been less or is it okay? Is it acceptable? We can always readjust and move back. It happens all the time, but we don't want to repeat the mistake again if a mistake was made. Thank you.
Candidate Barbier?
Well, I've already burned through infrastructure. So if you gave me one of the strategic goals where I think we need to focus on, spend a little more time developing, I would go with environmental. I think each of our other areas have just key KPIs, like one of the goals for Public Works, locate all the lead service lines. That's pretty easy to measure. Did you do it or did you not? And the environmental aspect also brings in a level of politics into the council that we really want to avoid. We saw the fights with COVID, and can we agree on what should be our goal for a carbon footprint? How much should we reduce this? What costs are we willing to incur? And really come together on things like that so we can agree where we are going forward?
Thank you. Candidate Brown? How would you decide to support a project that is unpopular with residents but needs to be done?
Yeah, that's a tough one. You know, I think it's, my mind comes back to, we have a limited, we're a very mature community. Wheaton has been around for a long time. There's not a lot of undeveloped land in our walls. And so as we look at some of the continual need for capital improvements and financial constraints put on the community, development, redevelopment is likely to happen. And sometimes that's not favorable for some of the residents. We've got a project that's still pending just south of the train tracks here that lingers. And we had some fun conversations. I'm looking at my colleague out in the audience tonight. And yet, I think the end of the day, I truly believe the council is a high-functioning body right now, and so everyone up here is genuinely interested in doing what they believe to be best for the broader district. And so not everyone's going to like those decisions. It's a healthy conversation, but I think that's the right approach.
Candidate Hussein?
The question one more time, please.
How would you decide to support a project that is unpopular with residents but needs to be done?
Well, we wrestle with this with our three-year-olds, right? I'm thinking about my niece right now, and, you know, just kind of testing to see if I'm going to tell her, don't touch that stove again. It's just unpopular. But fortunately, we're all adults. We're not three-year-olds. We can sit together, we can have dialogue and collaborate, discuss, understand what the points of contention are, and work through them. I'm not locked into a position. It wouldn't be prudent to be like that, but at the same time, there's a reason why I've taken that position, and I need to be able to communicate that effectively and understand why others have the perspective that they do. At the end of the day, everyone up here is working together to serve Wheaton, and that's what we're being elected for, and that's what the residents, our customer base, if you will, is looking for. And that's what's important, is to achieve the overall good. Thank you.
Candidate Barbier?
I think I would seek first to understand why it is unpopular. What fears do you have? What concerns do you have? And are those justified? Because when I'm making my decision, I want to make sure that I have all the data available, and there might be something that I'm missing, and that's why this is unpopular. And then I would also show them the data that I looked at and how I came to my conclusion. I'm not going to support or deny anything without looking at that conclusion, and if it was good enough to convince myself, hopefully I can make that same case to the residents.
Candidate Bryce?
So the idea of an unpopular decision that must be done reminds me of my students giving them homework. Sometimes you got to do the work. The question really is, is that if it must be done, then how are we communicating it to the community on why? And to me, and as Barbier was just saying, it would be important for me to know all the facts, why we want it done, but then to understand why people don't want this to go through. And then hopefully, by looking at both sides, being able to communicate the benefit of what it is that we're trying to get through would be crucial. So just like telling my students about doing homework is going to help them with learning on a certain idea, I would want to be able to communicate with my community to say, this is the reason why, this is the benefit, this is why we're going to do this. And then hopefully, we can see the benefit for all.
Thank you. Candidate Hussein, we'll begin the next question with you. The downtown streetscape is complete and very popular, but what other areas of the city might need a boost or some attention in regard to economic development? And what would that look like? So I'll read one more time. The downtown streetscape is complete and very popular, but what other areas of the city might need a boost or some attention in regard to economic development? And what might that look like?
I think there's an area on the west side of town that has some buildings that are older that could use some investment, and some parking lots that are probably vacant or underutilized. I think there's some opportunity for development there. I think, I don't know which district this would be, but the area kind of on the other side of the tracks has been slowly being built up. But again, as you go further west from where the French market is, you'll see more of these type of areas as well. And I think that's where, you know, you could provide some investment and some opportunities.
Thank you. Candidate Barbier?
I think it's easiest in the economic development realm to see what has been successful before and see if you can revitalize that as opposed to going to areas that might not have that potential or that nothing has worked in the past. I know when I worked at the county, it was absolutely brutal trying to find somewhere to go to lunch. Like, that area at Roosevelt and County Farm Road, we need some more options. What happened to Boston Market? What happened to McDonald's? And how can we get more flexible with some of the restraints and zoning there to really make that a place and a destination that you want to be? And it's right across from St. Francis. You're going to have some built-in demand.
Thank you. Candidate Bryce?
So some of the areas, it's maybe not necessarily an area as much as I feel about even having like affordable housing to bring people in. You know, we're building a lot of great luxury condos, but it reminds me of the time when I first started teaching and I actually couldn't afford to rent a place here in Wheaton. And I wanted to be here with my family and my students. I would like to see us bringing in more things into the areas for students, sorry, kids. I have a lot of students on the mind. Areas that are free for our young student, young children to be, including just, more than just restaurants, more than just gas stations, more than just car washes. These are things that I hear from people in my community, and I think it would be good for us to even just see, yeah, what has other towns done to develop and build more and see what else we can add. Thank you.
Candidate Brown?
Yeah. Yeah, I would specifically focus on, I'd love to see, I was about to say South Wheaton. I think there's some good energy that's starting to come to life down there and happy to see that. I think one thing that would be an interesting one to explore would be around the College Avenue train station. There's a couple of footprints there that could use some revitalization. I think we could accomplish some affordable housing projects there, and if you kind of scurry down even a little bit, even more to the historically, the scripture press area. I know there's some projects being worked on there or at least conceptualized. So again, I think that would really provide some additional economic development, revenue for the city, provide a great continuation of the community within our boundaries and, you know, accomplish some affordable housing, which is sorely needed in our community.
Thank you. The next question is from the students at Wheaton Warrenville South. They asked them of park district candidates who didn't have the answer, and they requested that I ask them to you. And the question is, why are there so many one-way streets in downtown? And what can be done about that? And we'll begin with candidate Barbier.
Usually, because of left turns and other things, in a downtown area in a grid system, you're able to go with one-way streets, and it's more efficient, usually. But with our train traffic, it really grinds everything to a halt. I think we can look to see what we can do in the downtown, but we're largely going to be stuck with the one-ways, in my opinion. They're not all bad. There's spaces for parking. You get a little wider lanes. But yes, I understand the frustration and the congestion that is.
Candidate Bryce?
I guess maybe my first thought would be, hey, this is going to be good practice if you end up going into Chicago. When I think of all those one-ways. I will say that, yeah, one-ways make it kind of interesting, because I do remember the first time I was here with my sister, and we accidentally almost turned down a one-way street, but luckily a car had politely honked at us to let us know. But I think it's also beneficial when I think about how I ride my bike around town and I'm able to go down some of those one-way, oh my goodness, one-way roads, and being able to go with the traffic and not feel too intimidated by And being able to go with the traffic and not feel too intimidated by so many cars coming at me from either direction. So I think there are benefits. It maybe increases your chance of being able to cross a road easily when it's just a one-way, being able to walk and ride your bike in town. And so I feel like we all tend to have it. If you really want it, we can get a roundabout in somewhere, but.
Controversy for them. Candidate Brown.
Yeah, I love the question. It's cute. Yeah, you know, it's funny, because I was leaving my half of the sky the other day, and there was, you could tell probably was a visitor, they were coming, turned the wrong way down, down the road. And it happens if you've been around long enough. You know, and I guess what I would say is, it probably, you just need to think back to your junior high days when you were old enough that your parents let you go downtown, and you're on your feet. You have no, you're on your bike or you're walking. And so one-way traffic does make it a little bit more resident-friendly to move around and enjoy the amenities of the, of the community that we have. So it is a little bit goofy. I think even coming north across the tracks at Egg Harbor, you go straight, but then you got to get over to the other lane to keep going straight, because if you just stayed straight, you're actually in the turn lane now. So it is a little, it is unique, but, you know, I trust our engineering department did a nice job of trying to maximize it.
Candidate Hussein, how can you relate, resolve this for the students?
Oh, I liked where your question was going. How can you relate? We can definitely relate. We run into this problem all the time. It's exacerbated a little bit right now. Missed my turn this morning going for coffee because of the construction on Main Street, and I had to go over the tracks twice, one of which included the train coming. And so it's a, it's a treat for everyone, but I, you know, I'm on the historic commission. And what I would encourage these students to do is, a little plug from my group here, we have preservation month coming up. And walk downtown and look at the buildings. Look at the, how pedestrian-friendly our downtown is. And the tents are coming soon, so enjoy that. And a lot of that is because the roads aren't so wide. And in order to accommodate traffic, then you put in the one-way streets to allow flow and circulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, candidate Bryce, a little bit more serious question now is, what infrastructure project, roads, utilities, transit, et cetera, do you believe need immediate attention?
Oh, that's a really good question. You know, I am so new to this. And before I can even answer that, I would really want to have a deep dive into understanding how any of those infrastructures are in our city. I'm going to be honest, I don't know how they are. You know, I can see how our tracks are on the train as I cross them every day to go from my home to school. And just to think about the flooding that I see on my street would be one that I think about as well. So only from gauging what I can see from my own personal experience, I mean, I would really like to find a way to kind of help solve the flooding issue. It seems to be a topic that has come up multiple times in Wheaton. And being able to understand why we are having that as an issue. So basically, in short, I'm going to have to do some learning while I'm on this job, if I get it.
Candidate Brown.
Yeah, I totally, sympathetic to that. Yeah, I've got a little inside fastball. I've been sitting in these meetings for the last four years. But, you know, I would say specifically, we've got, we've got some aging water mains. You know, I think the useful life is 30 to 40 years. We've had them for 50 to 60 years. And so, you know, there are specific answers to that. But I am very sympathetic to, you know, a newcomer, it's not something you just kind of peruse on a Saturday. Why would you memorize the city of Wheaton budget? That's kind of weird. But those are, that infrastructure, those water mains are a big one that we're facing here.
Candidate Hussein.
What was the question about unforeseen, unknown?
The question was, what infrastructure projects, roads, utilities, transit, et cetera, do you believe need immediate attention in Wheaton?
You know, fortunately, Wheaton's doing a great job dealing with our immediate concerns and our midterm concerns. Scott pointed out the water mains, but there's a, there's progress on that front. The mayor just talked about it. And so I think the thing that maybe there isn't as much progress on is something like bicycle lanes or faster progress on one of these projects that we're working on, like the sidewalk project, or more connectivity for pedestrians across town and things like that. But I would have to look also. It's, it's not the light reading that I choose to do.
Candidate Barbier.
I would say in general, we don't run the city where we have anything flashing red that needs immediate attention. I will say that for the flooding, we have gone from studies to projects to actually constructing them. While we wish it could go faster, a lot of these things do take time. We're waiting on funding, agreements with some of the residents. We need easements or right-of-way on some of these things. So while it isn't as fast, we're moving in the right direction. Things that I would like to have immediately, definitely the water main, as has been pointed out, making sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation like Skokie or South Detroit. But most of all, I would love to just replace all the lead service lines, all the lead pipes in the city of Wheaton, not just for our health, but imagine how great that would be to say, we're a lead-free town. If you want to see your property values go up, that would do it.
Thank you. Candidate, candidate Brown. What would you, what would be your top priority to encourage a green and sustainable agenda for Wheaton?
Yeah, it's a great question. I always joke with my colleague, Ms. Bray Parker, that our Monday meeting packets are generally a few inches thick, and we get them in paper every week. I don't understand it. I got this cool little monitor in front of me. Why don't, why can't I get it digitally? I've got, I've got an iPad. I could get it emailed. There are some simple things like that. The technology exists to do a lot of things more cleanly, digitally, effectively. We could, we could save, you know, a lot more trees in that regard. But then there are just some more efficient ways to operate some of these infrastructures. I think you'll see, you know, again, replacing a water main that's 50, 60 years old, the technology on that is going to be a lot improved. So I think by just the ongoing infrastructure products that we have, but there are some real simple ways, of which I gave you, just if Andrea Rosdale is listening, that's my plug.
Candidate Hussein.
I'd be curious about solar panels and wind energy and other sources of dealing with waste and dealing with energy. And then also what options we're exploring for reuse. I think these are, you know, things that we have grown accustomed to practicing at home. But can we, you know, have neighborhood movements? Is there more than that can be done on a, on an individual level or at the government level? You know, there's initiatives certainly for e-recycling and things like that that we're doing a great job with. But I'd be curious to understand how much we've explored and what's available that we can harness as grants that are available now to reopen that exploration. Thank you.
Candidate Barbier.
Can you repeat the question?
What would be your top priority to encourage a green and sustainable agenda for Wheaton?
I think it's, again, I touched on it earlier, having that discussion about what we're doing and where we're going. Because we need to balance realities with advocacy in this regard. Do we want an all-electric public works fleet? Maybe we want that, but we're not going to be able to draw enough power to actually power up all those vehicles and get them going when we do have snow operations, and they have to be running 24/7. So understanding what the limitations are and what we can do is something that I hope at all levels of government, we're looking to do on the environmental side. And I know that we think about innovation as Moore's Law. And we say, wow, what can they do with all this technology that only applies to computer chips? If the internal combustion engine also was on that trajectory, we'd be getting 1,000 miles for a cup of gasoline. So just understanding what we're looking at and agreeing on goals.
Candidate Bryce.
I think this is a really good question when you think about, not only just being green and sustainable, but when I think about how we are building more for Wheaton and growing and doing all these things, I think those are wonderful additions to our town. But we want to be mindful also, as well as any of the green spaces that we lose when we put in new buildings, new parking lots. Not having green space also contributes to some of our flooding. If water can't, the rainwater can't go into the ground if you've got cement and buildings everywhere. But I do applaud Wheaton for having a lot of things that I've seen them do, like the recycling programs in which they reach out to the community and say, hey, do you have old electronics? Bring it here. So I think we need to kind of keep building off of those ideas. Even just the idea of what Brown said about having so much paper being used. Sometimes it comes down to the small things that we can do and some of the larger items that we can look into. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Hussein. What is your position regarding honoring through city proclamations and or celebration of the community for such as Black History Month, or Women's History Month, or Pride Month?
It's an interesting question, because we are a very diverse community. And it's continually evolving, right? There's more people of different ethnic groups, different culture groups, different faith groups coming in. And the question becomes, if you, if you recognize one group and don't recognize another group, or if you recognize a couple groups without recognizing other groups. And how does that work in the broader picture? I think we have to go back to what is the purpose of the recognition? What is, what is the city trying to acknowledge? You know, it's an evolving conversation, because indigenous land wasn't recognized five or 10 years ago, and it is now in a lot of cases.
Thank you. Candidate Barbier, the same question.
I don't think there's any other issue where my opinion is basically a barbell. One moment, I'm all the way on one side, one moment on the other. I think whatever we bring up here, we really have to be focusing on your infrastructure, your public safety, the services that we provide, and not bringing in all the politics and the fighting and the who can beat who. So part of me says, I don't think we should even get involved in any of these. But the other part of me says, we need to involve the community. We should be recognizing these great groups for what they're doing. And who are we to say that you guys can be recognized, but you can't be, especially when it comes to pride or the different cultures? You are part of this community. Whether the people like it or not, everyone's here. And I don't feel it's bad that we do recognize them.
Candidate Bryce.
I think it's important for us to recognize these different achievements of a multitude of people, a diverse group of people. Even just recently, I participated in, attending in the Pride gathering this past summer, just because I thought, hey, this is great. This is the first time they're doing this here. I want to show my support. But I think by acknowledging, yes, how diverse we are, and giving a sense of open community where all are welcomed, it's not so much just saying, we're only going to recognize one group and not the other, but being able to tell people, if you want to be recognized, let us hear your voice and share with us. So I would hope that with things like this, it would just be another learning factor for anyone to learn more about the people in their town and grow from there.
Candidate Brown.
Yeah, I appreciate the sentiment being expressed. It is a tricky one. I like what Said had said earlier that it's one Wheaton. And so you might say, well, we're four districts. Well, it's still one Wheaton. And I'd say, wow, there's different people groups and it's diverse. Yeah, then that's what makes us strong. I think the challenge comes, I actually looked at it. Did you know that, let's see, March is Brain Tumor Awareness Month, Irish-American Heritage Month, Women's History Month, National Colon Cancer Awareness Month? Should we do a proclamation for every one of those? Because if we do one for one, we're leaving somebody out, right? And so is the business of the city council to sit up here and just make a proclamation for every possible person in group? I mean, I suppose you might say the answer is yes. Well, our meetings are going to turn into be very long. And so there's a business of Wheaton. And so what I might say is, the, the direction for that could be in some of our, maybe the Community Relations Committee, or some of the subcommittees that we have, venues for these celebrations, the Festival of Cultures, for example. But it's a challenging one.
Thank you all. We're sorely running out of time, but I do want to get one development question in. And it's, it's this. The large parking lot to the west of Wheaton Center is now largely empty with so many people working from home. What are your plans for the use of that property? And we'll begin with candidate Barbier.
I don't believe we have any plans for that currently. Largely, if the space is privately owned, we don't get much of a say in it. We're going to execute the zoning ordinance and evaluate any proposals that that land owner has. And as such, with any of our properties, parking lots or whatever else, we do have to analyze, what is the usefulness? What is its best use case? Because we all have seen, when there's open space and then we get one idea of something to put there, it's not always everyone else's favorite idea. So we have to be careful in that regard. And as you said, a lot of people working from home, is that going to change? Will we be back in the office full-time? I don't know. So no plans that I am aware of right now.
Candidate Bryce.
It's an interesting question, because I don't think that has even kind of crossed my mind. Again, another reason why I'm trying to get myself involved, to understand how our city is running. And I would kind of actually reiterate what he was just saying. If the parking lot's not being used, because we're finding that statistically that more people are working from home, we do kind of want to wait and see, will that change in five years? What is the use of the parking lot now, before? What can we see it as in the future? I mean, I'm thinking how one would go forward with this idea is, does it get brought up to the people? You said a private owner may have it. So again, I don't understand, I don't know what it was happening for that parking lot. So it'd be kind of interesting to see how we would go about to work out a plan on what we can bring there. Again, I'm always all for bringing in some more green spaces, but that's just me.
Candidate Brown.
Yeah, the reality is, to it, if it's privately owned, you're just subject to the zoning ordinances of it. But wouldn't it be fun, let's, let's go hypothetical, if the Park District were to buy it and dome it and make an extension of the CAC, and in the winter months, we could send our kids there for structured activities? We talked about the school board earlier tonight, maybe all the B-team sports could be played there. And it would be funded by the Park District, so even better. I didn't, I didn't spend an additional dime of the city's money. But no, it's, it is one that I think that that, you're seeing that evolution, is that return to work, lack of commute is, is being transpired. So believe me, that, that property owner will feel the squeeze eventually.
Candidate Hussein.
I didn't realize it was private. I thought it was a public lot. And it's because I saw one of the smaller trucks in there driving around and kind of practicing at a park and backup and things like that recently when I was in there. And I thought, this is a great use for this open space. But that kind of leads me to, if it is private, how are we partnering with that entity or that person to? that person to put it to use? I've seen, actually, we were in Houston around Christmas time and they have parking lots for those food trucks that are there for the, for the weekend or, you know, for the evening. And what a nice extension of our summertime downtown revitalization with the, with restaurants and so forth. And then you start to get foot traffic going over to this parking lot and then people coming back over and just kind of extends our economic development. So, you know, we should collaborate and partner with, with that owner and see what uses there may be that can be had for that space.
Thank you. Well, I have a variety of questions left that there's no time to have us ask at this evening's forum. So I hope the residents will reach out to you as you're walking your districts and campaigning in the future days to get those questions answered. So would everyone please join me in thanking the candidates for being here tonight? So it is now time for closing statements. And candidate Bryce, you have time now for your closing statement.
Okay. Thank you again, everyone. I am committed to fostering strong leadership, transparency, and collaboration with our city. And so I believe that by engaging with the community, like I am right now, and working alongside with fellow council members, I can help continue to build on Wheaton Strategic's visions and I hope to support thoughtful decision-making on what we do from here and moving forward. I really want to say that I will listen, I will learn, and I will work diligently to ensure our city continues to thrive. And I would be honored to serve and bring a fresh, engaged perspective to this role. So I ask you, please, write in Leah Bryce on April 1st.
Candidate Brown.
Sure. I'd be remiss if I didn't get a chance to just acknowledge, one of my slogans, my slogan is residents first. And I think so many times, residents just don't feel heard. And I would like to think for the North District, I have done a nice job of doing that, responding specifically directly to each of those who reach out, standing up when it's not popular. And that's what we're here for. That's what we do. I am not here for me. Lord knows, you can't scare me with free time. I just, I'm not here for me. I love Wheaton. I love what it's about and I love the opportunity to pour into others because this is a great community. So I believe in what we're doing here. I believe in you. I believe in your talents. I believe in your children, the opportunities that we have to provide an amazing community, a safe community, a community where you can walk, figure out one-way streets. So I'm interested in serving you.
Thank you. Candidate Hussein.
I'd like to thank you and the entire team. I think that's a really important place to start, providing voters a platform for awareness. Takes a lot of time. I know the energy that it's taken for all of you to do this and for all of you to come here and, and listen to me. I'm vested in Wheaton. I love the arts here. I love going to events with family, with neighbors, with friends, sometimes anybody that will come along, being involved in activities and nonprofits, learning, contributing, and giving back. I have a history of service and I'm interested in growth and I think that's possible. I don't think it's one or the other. I think we can be unified, look at growth and improve our services. And I'd like to bring my skill set and talents to city governance and help propel us forward as one Wheaton. Thank you.
And candidate Barbier.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of Wheaton for organizing this event. Thanks to our great moderator and thanks to the City of Wheaton communication staff for the work they are putting in tonight, and I'm sure they will make these beautiful. The East District will be a write-in vote, so be sure to check the box. And of course, write in Michael Barbier. That's Michael, like Jordan, and then Barbie with an R at the end. Yeah, you like that, yeah. All right. The city is in a great spot. We really do have a, a good thing going. However, there are still big challenges ahead and there will be tough decisions to make. The question before you as a voter is, who do you want analyzing these issues? If you want an East District Councilman that cares deeply about the community, brings an expertise in public infrastructure, and will focus at the local issues at hand, I would love your vote. I'm Michael Barbier. Let's engineer a better tomorrow.
Thank you. I would like to also thank the City of Wheaton for their generosity and use of the council chambers and for their welcoming of all of us tonight. Our democracy thrives when all of us are engaged. Attending or watching a candidate forum is an excellent way to be empowered to join discussions on local issues and make your voice heard on Election Day. We hope that each and every one of you will vote and inspire your family and friends and neighbors to do the same. Information on how and when to vote can be found on the website, vote411.org, or on the Wheaton League of Women Voters website. A recording of this forum will be available on the Wheaton Public Access Channel 17 and on the League of Women Voters website. To the candidates, good luck, best wishes on your campaign trail. Good night.
Thank you.